Thank you very much. Is that better? Can we, can we hear now the sound on? So that was a quick recap. We have voted on, co-opted the Buckingham Society.
You'll get used to it after another four years or something.
We've got too much time. So we've co-opted, co-opted the Buckingham Society this committee and we have elected a vice chair, Tony Allen, while the sound was off. But hopefully other than that, we did it properly.
It is working.
Thank you, John. The planning committee last met on the 14th of April. And can I have somebody to propose on this? We need some declarations of interest. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I skipped over. First mistake. Item five, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Right.
Just in case we ever meet, the North Buck Planning Committee ever meets to discuss an application to do with Buckingham, I declare my interest in it. I'd affect it, interest in the whole matter.
Thank you very much for your bother. And item six, the minutes of the planning committee held on the 14th of April. Are these a correct record? Okay. Do I need to have a proposer? Martin and Andy seconding it. And all in favour of the minutes? Yep. All in favour. Right, that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Item seven, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Vale Balesbury plan, Buckinghamshire local plan. So complaints and projects manager Steve is going to give us a favorable opinion.
Just a little bit to update you on the make of the plan. That was all recorded last what council, they agreed. The responses to go to the examiner and they have been submitted and I await further news.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Any comments?
Good new chair. Would it be possible at a time of convenience to just do a brief note of the major things that we've got in the plan because there's, we had to pro credit to the vice chairman chair at work, they did on it previously. And I understand that they've been kind enough to say they'll carry on working on the plan.
Yes.
But I think as it goes through, many of the new members want to delve with the plan. And many of us didn't make every meeting to do the plan. So it might be useful if we had a briefing note of the major, just the top line policies that we've got in the plan, not the details.
My recollection meter is a summary in the documents on the website, but I will investigate.
Perhaps you could just remind us and circulate it again so that people can see it's out of line?
Because we will question and ask about it.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you very much indeed. Are we okay then to move on to the meat of the meeting? So I'm going to make planning applications and very kindly with additional information provided by my captain McGillicuddy. Who is interested all to our thinking on these things. So the first application is to do with five acres to close down in Linden village. Household application proposed garage conversion, construction of single story rear extension, parking area and rear garden store. Now this looks fairly straightforward. There's a large garden area, but what, what do members think? Any, what have you thought when you're looking at it? Was there anything? John, please.
Oh, it seems reasonable to me. I propose no objections.
Yeah. Okay. So we have no objections either, other than to say the garden store, it's already there. It's always in that way. It's spotted the Buckingham Society. So are we, Martin, please?
No, I just can't believe that the red line takes that route. But if that is the case, it's not, it has been in the past where the red lines have not necessarily been where they should be. And I can see, you know, they've left that in the design for viewing round that bend, which only takes away a little bit. And they're not going to fence it in anyway. They're, it's still hard standing there. But.
Your point?
Well, it is, is the red white, is the red line correct?
Yes. There are other places on Linden village where the verge is outside of the golden boundary. So minded to be, it is correct. Do you want us to check it, Martin, or agree something subsequent to having that checked?
No, no, no.
Okay. So I think five acres to close. Are there any more comments on it? It seems to be generally considered to be okay now. Vote on it? Yes. Are we in favour? All those in favour?
No objections.
Those who have no objections. Right. That's everybody. And are there any extensions?
Obstention.
Yeah. Obstention or even abstention.
I like, I like.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get my words out. Tony, I should warn you, the oxygen at this level. The last time I sat on this chair was 2005 for a completely different meeting. So it's enough on acres to close. Let's move on. Item two, Avenue Lodge Stratford Road, which probably seems like a bit of an old friend to many of us. It's been mentioned here before and Catherine has given us a history. It's a household application direction of two story side extension. And it's a, I might say it's a slight change. Nothing inordinately new, but what do, what do members think? Any comments please?
I mean, I sort of, again, I feel like there's no, I have no objections to it. I didn't really have any objections to the last one. I felt, I sort of feel that it was refused. So I suppose no objection. Yes.
Karen, Buckingham Society?
Yes, we took another look at it all. We were a bit unhappy about it first time around actually. And we couldn't find a material objection. But on the second application, yes, they've done all sorts of minor changes. But we've borne in mind the inspector's report when it was dismissed at appeal. And we think he got it right really in that it is rather significant in the street scene there. And the proposed extension still obscures its nobility as a avenue lodge. Particularly if you look at it from the east elevation, it obscures that very distinctive chimney. So we object. Okay. Other thoughts around table?
Martin?
Yeah. The second bite of cherry does improve it because they got the standard roof line there, which we had a bit disjointed before. But I know there's always progress in the world. And but we are losing so much as you come into Buckingham, having that street scene presented. Although a lot of people will just pass it by. But, you know, that's because probably they've got terribly used to it. Therefore it doesn't stick in their mind. It's just a matter of fact, it is there. Moving it to this, I prefer they didn't do it, but I can't see any real reason apart from the secondary gutter line not being particularly through. But that's probably due to the dormer windows and how they need to be built. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to not object.
Help me out with some of those thoughts. John, John. I'm sorry, John.
Yes, I'm quite happy with this because it doesn't change the frontage drastically for us not to appreciate it as we drive past.
It's down the side.
It's the side, which is, very few people will see it. It's got a massive pitch.
Yeah. Okay. Just a few more comments, anybody? Okay. Thank John.
Yeah, I'm with the Buckingham Society on this. I, I think it's going to get rejected again anyway by the planning officers based on the same, it's a hard getting difference from what was the case before. And I think the very same reasons will be used to reject this. And I think they're the right reasons. This is a lodge, not a house. It was defined as such. And I think they're changing the nature of it to a point where the heritage asset of the town will not be the same. And I don't think it's right. So I'm, I'm an objection.
So what's the, what are the planning grounds for objecting to it? Can you give me some help on that?
The design, it definitely interrupts the street scene. It does not give integrity to the original building, which is a little chaotic.
Yeah. Thank you. And I think the remarks of both the planning officer and the inspector sum it up very neatly. Yeah, very articulate. Yes, thank you. Any final answer one way or the other? Shall we put it to the vote and see how it goes? And so those.
We need a proposal to whether to object or not object.
Can I just be clear? Sorry, chat. Through Catherine, what planning reasons have we got to object to this?
Well, as Caroline says, the, it does affect the street scene to some extent. They are retaining the side porch, which is what the inspector wanted. But they are making a new front door in the extension because they've got a hall now. It's a straight into the kitchen. The usual phrase is detrimental to the street scene.
So the would some of the nightmares propose that?
I propose no objection.
No objection. Yeah.
I was going to say. Andy seconded it. So the vote is whether we have no objection to this. Those for the no objection. So that's Heather, Tony, Fran, Lisa, Andy and Lucy. And those against? And any abstentions? Martin and Robin. Okay. Thank you very much indeed. That was a slightly. Yes. And then item three, thank you. We'll keep moving on. Twenty four Oshorsey Street, London Road. Twenty four London Road, household application for construction of single and two story rear extension from porch extension, raising a roof and addition of rear facing dormer. This seems to be quite a, quite a considerable one. Who would like to make any comments on it first? How did you, how did you find it? What did you think about it? John and then Caroline.
I think this is overdeveloped and there's no justification for it. So I would object to it.
Yep. Caroline.
Well, another old friend. And we did say that the view of the person is much improved on the last one. It's really important. We tend to agree that it is an overdevelopment. The rear dormer window is, is black roof, which was very inflexible, using the term. But the design guide does say that it shouldn't be too close to the roof line. And on drawings, it does look rather too close to that with. So apart from that element of it, we didn't have any objection. We didn't.
Other thoughts from around the table? Please, Fran?
I'd like to second John's proposal. Though we object on the grounds of overdevelopment.
Okay. Any other thoughts from round the table? Shall we go for a round then? But we will object. The votes in favour of objecting on the grounds of overdevelopment. What in favour? Strong. Heather, Tony, Fran, Lisa, Martin, Lucy. Okay. Anyone against? And abstention. Against? Abstention. Two abstentions. Andy and Robin. Okay. Thank you very much indeed.
Should the people who are voting, unless we're having a recorded vote, is it right that the names are pulled out on that?
Maybe not. Yes.
Well, we're not recording the names. It is a live broadcast, we can speak anyway. As long as, it just helps me to count the numbers because I kind of sort of sit and I stand up all the time. But we're not recording it.
I'll try not to do it. Just make sure. Hi Anne, hi Anne White. Right. Item four, twenty Hubbard Close up on Page Hill. Household application for replacement of existing conservatory with single story side part of rear extension covered terrace area along the rear patio and addition of six number roof line. That's number four. Actually, I understand, not been bearing many changes to this part of the estate for a long time. So this is, this is unusual. But what do members feel about it? Fran?
I can see no issues with it. I'd face that we have no objections.
Yeah. Okay. Andy. Does anybody else want to debate the issue or can we go straight to the vote? So we are going to vote in favour of no objection. If you are in favour of no objection. Unanimous. And Robbie abstention forward. Okay. Thank you very much indeed. And this is, the next application is for the King's Head on Market Hill. And I'm not going to read out the whole thing, but they're having a a lot of work done. And in fact, as you will notice, if you've been past, they've had a lot of work done. So although the technical doesn't say right perspective, I think we say that it has been done. And it'd be interesting to see what, hear what members have to say about it. Martin?
So I won't say in the words of the Euro UK people. But yeah, how did this happen? You know, we have a law, we have a system and yet it's in a conservation area. And yet they go ahead before we give our approval or not approval. Or objectional, no objection. So.
Dangerous of course, isn't it? Because if you're going to against, you can't do it all.
Yeah, they would, but.
But as you say.
You know, the rest of the world, or not the world maybe, the rest of the country normally complies, although not always. But I just don't get it. They're a commercial business. They know how it all works. And yet they just flaunt it.
Yeah.
And that annoys me more than, yes, it's looking quite nice from the outside.
Okay. Well, we may have to, that's a, we may have to decide on planning as well. John?
My recollection is, and Catherine, is they, we've got previous windows when they changed the lettering before. That was also post, post Oxford, where they went ahead and did it. It's a different company. Nonetheless, this is the same, you know, do it first and then get permission.
Yes, seek forgiveness. Yeah.
And I must say, I'm distressed that they still kept the barn the same place. This is the most awkward place for a barn when you walk into it. Because everyone's all crowded around and you can't get through to the other side of it very well. So I'm very surprised they kept the same floor plan. But I wish them well, but I, I think after one, I'd like to object. I might have just gone ahead with it without getting permission. But most ordinary people, do anybody else ever on the other end?
Yes, absolutely. Martin?
Yeah, if I come back and just ask for some clarification from the good and the great on illuminated external signs. In a conservation area.
Yes, you're allowed external illumination. That is like a routine light over the site. What you're not allowed is internal illumination. So what's letters with the lights inside? Yes, on the technical. Still.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? It's the King's Head.
Can we register also?
Oh, sorry. Tony?
Can we register our dissatisfaction that it hasn't come before anything to get approval?
I would hope one could. But in terms of planning law, I think, you know, others say we are for or against it. But we can obviously have a little moment. It doesn't sound it makes any difference, but we can have a go. Lucy?
Also just the uplighters. I know in the past we've had issue with uplighting because of light pollution. And I mean, in the proposed image, they don't actually look that bright, but I don't actually know how bright they are in reality. I haven't been that way. When it's dark. It gets dark quite late these days. Mine already about 2:00.
Catherine tells me she doesn't allow after dark. So Fran, have you been out after dark?
I do sometimes go out after dark. I'd like to say that it's disappointing to see that while they have an accessible entrance, which when we've tried to get somebody in a wheelchair and through that accessible entrance, it isn't actually that accessible. But they've not done anything about any accessible facilities, having obviously spent quite a lot of money refurbishing and moving things around a bit. They haven't moved things around enough to provide unaccessible door use.
And is the point there that if it's extensive works, they are more likely to expect him to do it. Whereas if it's not, they might be allowed to rest on patting the hump pot. It's an old listed building, et cetera, et cetera. So.
We feel rather the same as the comments around the table. The fact that it's a retrospective on a listed building is pretty appalling. But as to its appearance, we have no objection.
Yes. And we are really here to decide on upon its appearance and how it's going to fit into the street scene in the town. So I think people will guide me on this. I think we would probably, the mood of the meeting is to say no objection. But with some riders in there or disabled footnotes or no flagrant.
I think, I think we need to object on the ground that they haven't done anything to provide any disabled access. They, the style of the lettering is not really in keeping with the listed building. um, not really in keeping with the listed building. Um, um, and um, there was something else and I can't think what it was. What's the other things that have been brought up?
Uplighting.
Uplighting.
Um, is there anything wrong with the uplighters there? We don't, or? What about that?
And, um, they're putting a, putting a panel sign rather than the, um, the, um, painted on the walking's head as it is at the moment. Um, missing an apostrophe.
I think you might be overloading a bit, um, you might not be able to, if you're overloaded.
The apostrophe must, yes, absolutely.
And, and who's the king?
King Rollo.
No, it's not. It does look, yes.
Could be Alfred.
Um, yes, it's not telling how charming first, which it should be.
Just also, um, in regards to the signage, um, Catherine has obviously helped put in that, um, May's signage, um, opposite was refused on the grounds of the comments that proposals are unacceptable due to poor choice materials for new signage, using synthetic materials to find is appropriate, inappropriate. And also has negative impact on surrounding heritage asset as it is an unsympathetic modern material that is not in keeping with traditional materials of the historic character of the conservation area. So I think again, the signage as I pointed out, yeah.
And what was it, they're using aluminium or something?
Aluminium and vinyl and white foam X letters.
Yeah, so it's aluminium, is that artificial? I'm not sure, but anyway, synthetic panels.
But heritage put the timber somewhere.
They did timber, I can imagine. So I think, um, uh, sorry, John.
Um, I think we established last time that committing capital notice, um, apostrophe is not a question.
Yes, we can probably live without the apostrophe. Um, done. So, uh, Martin, yeah.
Well, just in the comments back to, uh, Buckinghamshire, that it is now retrospective from those people on the ground.
Yeah, yeah, that's almost like a good point.
Because they may not know that being from a long way away.
Absolutely. So I'm going to ask you to vote on that list of.
So I propose that we, we, um, um, object on those grounds.
Yeah, also Fran and Lucy's seconding it. So we are proposing, the proposals that we object on the brass, it's retrospective. Uh, they're using synthetic material for the panels. Um, King's Head is, um, out of, uh, character. Um, no accessible, uh, toilets and, um, uh, panel lettering as well, though.
The front, the front, the front isn't in keeping.
Yes, so that's quite a, a, quite a match, really. Um, yeah, so can, uh, so.
I propose.
Lucy seconded it, so shall, who wants to, you, you'd like to vote now in favour of that objection? A long list of objections.
So we object.
We're objecting, yes, yes. So everybody, everybody and then Robin have stayed.
I don't, yes.
Yeah.
I shall be opposed so far.
You can vote.
So taking a good stand for your vote so far.
You take very well, Jane.
Yeah.
Well, I, I knew that would be an interesting one and. Oh, I could do that. But that was, I think that was a very good discussion. Okay, uh, moving on then, back to London Road, number four, London Road. Um, and this is where the, um, uh, it's been a student H M O. And, uh, it's now going to be the proposed list that goes to being a, uh, I don't know, a non-student H M O.
Proper house.
For, yes, but for, for workers, a bit, with, um, quite a few, um, kitchenettes involved inside the property, um, every room. And, um, so I'd be interested to hear what members have to say about this for the safety issues and the density of living there. Frank?
Um. Apart from that, it's already converted to being an H M O. Um, I just would like to say that, um, it upsets me that people are, um, having to rely on living, um, in H M Os because we're not building enough, um, proper accommodation for single people. And living in an H M O is not suitable for a huge number of people.
Well made and recorded, Caroline. Um, Tony first?
Um, yeah, I've got concerns about looking at the size of the rooms and cooking facilities as such where they are. I, I, I think, um, I'd be concerned of possible fires and incidences.
Thank you, thank you. Alan?
Yes, we had the same point about the safety issues, um, but also on the parking elements. I mean, if they are professional, um, tenants rather than students, they're likely to have a car. And the parking is just inadequate, quite a parking, in fact, it's a main road along which pupils and, and students for schools travel regularly. Um, cars parked in the road will not be acceptable and they will inevitably overspill into the road. So we definitely object to it.
Yeah, I'm deeply concerned about the, uh, requested variation in condition six. Very often, condition six relating to kitchenettes in rooms is motivated by wanting to support tenants with serious health challenges for whom other housemates' cleaning behaviour in, I'm assuming it's meant to say communal, it says communal kitchen, have significant impact on their health. I'm looking to provide a more controlled environment for such individuals that may need this by having kitchenettes in three of seven rooms for some residents for their cooking slash warming food outside communal kitchen and limit to some extent behaviour of other housemates on their health. Now, that to me is deeply concerning that this H M O is going to be advertised, uh, in some way to vulnerable people.
Yeah.
Um, who, um, having, for my own good, having, um, lived on a site in To Western, which I'm sure a lot of members are familiar with, which was advertised as, um, no, no, no product checks, no, um, good for people escaping to this environment, people going through, um, health issues, um, accepts housing benefit, et cetera, et cetera. And the living conditions were squatted, they were falling. Um, and my fear that he's actually, the, 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 the requested variation is actually stating that he wants to support tenants with serious health challenges for whom other housemates' cleaning behaviour may have a significant impact on their health. And he makes reference to behaviour of other housemates on their health. He allowed that, uh, variation. And that really concerns me as to what his, or what, sorry, I don't do the gender first, what their intention is behind this H M O and what kind of, um, living conditions they are expecting there to be.
Very well spotted.
Yeah, that, I'm really, really, really concerned about that part.
And, and it does sound like a sort of property that if you were having those feedbacks, you'd want it to be with somebody supervising or looking after and supporting them, you know, not, not sort of a little house of, um, and everyone's left their devices, yes, okay. Any other thoughts on, on, uh, John, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I do think the regulations are on H M Os in precise terms, but picking up on what Tony says, I do think the fire brigade ought to be involved in looking at this because looking at the plans as Tony and Karen highlighted, I mean, looking at bedroom.
Yes, exactly.
Bedroom six, I mean, the cooking is right next to the bed there. It's a double bed, so the idea of there being only seven people seems unlikely given that they're all double beds.
Yeah.
So they could easily move in, say your partner or friend or whatever.
Fourteen, apparently.
And that's a lot more people. So I, I'd strongly object to this. I think we should recommend for sure that the fire brigade takes a look at these plans. And to be honest, if I'm, if I'm being suspicious, I hunch is these arrangements are already in place. Um, my hunch is those, those, those kitchenette areas are already there. Um, but I don't know that for sure, of course, it's just a suspicion.
Yeah.
Um, that's the case, but yeah, I think this is. And we're talking of a town that is a university town, taking away a combination that specifically students seems to be a stupid thing to do, really.
Yes.
Um, because we know how much pressure there is on students on ordinary combination of towns. To take away the one single H M O that at the moment has the right of it is only for students, um, seems a bit dumb.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, John. Um, any other thoughts or comments, Martin?
Yeah, I'm not too sure whether it comes into the remit of a H M O. Because I thought H M Os had to have shared facilities.
No, no.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Kitchen is retained for the other four rooms that are to package next to you still.
Yeah.
So it's just about.
Well, that needs to be checked, really.
Yeah.
Because there is a mix, um, but there is a defined percentage which has to be, uh, shared and, and others.
Shall we hear from Catherine? I think H M O licensing will have something to say.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, yes, thank you, Catherine. But I think we ought to maybe just mention it in our reply.
Yes. So, um, I, uh, think that we are moving towards, uh, a vote on objecting to this, as I'm very sensitively intuitive to these things. Um, and, um, on grounds of safety and in fact that the, uh, the fire brigade at least ought to have a look at this to see whether those, um, kitchenettes and ovens next to beds are feasible or sensible. Um, the, we want to query also whether the H M O, whether the licensing is, would still be in place? Would it cover what is being proposed here? Um, parking, um, it's right on the main road, there is no more room for parking. Um, and seven working people or whatever the target audience is would, would struggle. Um, and in a way, I suppose that the one that, uh, Lucy mentioned, the, um, this, uh, mention of vulnerable people and trying to deal with that, what exactly is meant by that? So with those points, can I ask?
And the student as well, we don't need to loss of student.
And we don't, and, and we don't need loss of student accommodation, thank you, John. Um, so can I ask somebody to oppose that? And thank you, and second it, Lucy, thank you, good team developing there, proposing second in the park. Um, so all in favour of the objection on those grounds? Anybody getting to see the, the, and any abstentions? Exercise their protest.
I've been looking at Anglo-Saxon Kings and the most closest one I can get, it looked like the gentleman is Edward the elder, or it's Punda, Punda. No, um, and that's the closest I can get to that picture.
Thank you, Catherine, sorry.
It's a, a, a relative point.
We knew, I couldn't even knew him, actually. Go back a bit.
Maybe you like it.
Got the look, you know. But you're all thanks up there on the screen. Um, instantly recognisable. Right, but thank you all very much, Jeanine, I think that was a, an important discussion and a one that really does deserve following through. I saw what the answer was. Um, now we come on to something which was a bit of a mystery to me before, I had a briefing on this, which was the not for consultation trees circulated separately, which is trees in tandem around. Um, we have two applications, uh, one is in Waggles Garden. They're both, uh, sorry, they're both in Waggles Garden, yeah, okay. We have two, it seems to be a problem with you trees. Um, so these are just for noting, is that?
Yes, because of the responses already, this seems, you know, the consultation buying out.
Okay, so the people, rather than have done one, yes, thank you, I do see that happening.
Uh, can I just say, um, we told you so, but it's nice to see that they're being managed. When you build houses, trees, they are prone to growing. But at least they are being managed before they've got to four metres, uh, too far and then it's difficult to claw it back.
Yes, the same garden that's got a one in Tony's. One in Tony, I don't know the last house. Okay, do we?
We told you so.
All right, are, are we, are we planning to write anything to these?
Been done. Already been done.
Yes, that's right. You get to have to do, you have to very quick. Yes, that's, well, but something, right, otherwise they move. I work out, otherwise, otherwise you don't get any numbers saved. But I do say that when this is coming authority, you wait for our comment. Thank you, we talked about it, good, so long as we're good. Yeah, sorry, Robin, you were going to say.
I think they say that the weather Tony had probably run off the building.
Yes, yes.
Not with any luck.
Yes.
It's only Bailey.
Yes, they are wonderful. Um, and then interesting one, and not the conservation city, but the law for this on fifty-three Fishers Field. Um, and this one I think is likely to, it's come before us today, but not, not in a state that we're going to be able to, uh, make any decisions on. It's likely to come back to us perhaps in a future form, do you think, Catherine?
Yes, uh, I had expected by now that it would have been the law, possibly the original conditions, Fishers Field. Specifically saying that you can't add anything to the coverage without full application. Now, the officer may not be aware of this because if you look at the property history of properties in Fishers Field, it doesn't fit in well yet. There is no reference. I mean, there were two or three applications for Fishers Field because it is the old paint factory site and there were concerns about later on the paint. And, um, none of the three previous applications that I know about are actually in the property history. Because it's down as land at, um, actually.
Wow, have they got it right now or is it still?
Not yet, no.
Just, um, for you, you can, um, with the hierarchical, um, information, um, data, knowing information. How will we in the town keep track of this stuff? Or is there, are they doing away with all the historical information along the?
No, 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 the, the, I mean, the planning histories are very well kept up to date. Except where, I mean, for example, Campbell Court is down as Landoff Bridge Street. There are three different places to look at the histories of Campbell Court and the White Hart Farm Park. But the, it's the modern estates that start off being Landoff Stratford Road or Landoff Tin Twink Road. And they don't get refilled and the neighbours give them to them. And then new applications come in. And they're not related to it because they look at it and they say, oh, well, can't find anything about that. Um, do you remember when we did the houses along us? Or was it the bottom of London Road?
Yeah.
Where they used to be attached. Then they had that odd garage. And then they built a flat over the garage.
Yeah.
None of those are related on the property history.
Wow, interesting thing. Well, well, well made.
Just, I just see people thinking, but you know what's going on.
Yes, exactly, okay. Oh, thank you very much. Well, thank you, thank you, Catherine, love. Um, item nine, so this is, um, where we work out whether we won or in school draw or we lost. Um, so here we have a phobia way of, um, uh, which we opposed and was approved. Um, and then obviously with, we didn't object and they were approved. Um, when the, uh, other way was it? Yes, we had no objections and they, uh, Buckinghamshire Council, um, refused. I can't remember, Catherine, what was that, that was a huge one, right?
Yes, um, it was, uh, the, Lisa knows what this one is. It's the one, it's the end bit of Burley Court that faces you. So it's a little, it's a tiny little two-bed starter home. And they wanted to pretty well cover the garden with their extension.
Yeah.
So it was massive. And we thought, well, if you don't want the garden, that's your problem, you're not a site owner.
Yeah.
Um, but the officer said, no, it's too big to do.
Wow, so that, that was an interesting one for note.
Yeah.
Thank you, Catherine, very much.
Yeah.
Um, and then not for consultation, um, a few more, uh, down the bottom of that page there. And then we'll be going, eighteen forty. Um, and the planning and spectrum, yeah, land west of London Road, Site Q.
Yep.
Um, I have to say, I don't quite understand this, so I'd be very welcome if anybody else who wants to be super knowledgeable.
I hope this, uh, the members will recall that Site Q, which was the following land, uh, application coming for housing. Um, the, it was turned down at Buckinghamshire's, uh, meeting. Uh, the inspector has now overturned that and allowed the appeal. Um, this is to give information on, um, what happens next. We are not party to this application, so Buckingham Town Council cannot take this process any further. Um, only Buckinghamshire Council can do that. And, um, Buckinghamshire Council have given their response to me, which I've copied on to the here, which is that they don't believe that there's any, uh, lawful planning reason that they can change the, um, allowance of the appeal.
Okay, thank you very much, it is disappointing. Uh, Rob?
Yeah. Um, I wrote to him on the second, I, I think this might come up. And, um, I figured we were. I think this might come up and um I figured we were a few to meet in members discussing section one O six and the obligations which are in it and things that may not be as you wish to discuss. What we've discovered is the wording around the educational funding might be an error that you wish to discuss. Um how it's worded, um and the other elements around it haven't quite got into yet, but those those things about where the proportionates of the funds go um are worded very differently to they were on the Tindrick Road application. Um.
And where is that leading us?
Um I'm concerned that money might leave Buckingham.
Yeah.
Um in the sense that.
It's not different education, it's just it's not.
No, I I've.
You know, in real main educational, and that is the point, if they've got money set aside for educational purposes, but they can't find any use for it for the possibility of getting planning through with that, or anything for schools in the town, they are liberty to use it anywhere else in the county. As long as it's an educational purpose. And we swerve this one into the road.
Yeah, thanks to Catherine. Um but the what was, and I had a meeting today and discussed it in very detail. Tardy meeting. Um I did never, as a local member, get to see the section one O six. It was basically follows the recommendations of the um inspector's report, which there is thirty-five percent affordability, which we would all agree is good. But it's this element of the education funding round it, and it states that money will go to Buckingham School. Um Buckingham Primary and it states.
First down.
First down, correct. And but what it also says then, these words, which means that if they're not proportioned, you will record questioned future use of secondary school places in Buckingham before the election. And the response that we got was along the lines of, well, we'd go and likely to build a new school on the outskirts of Milton Keynes. Now I've got no evidence to prove that yet, but I'm going to carry on my route of termination, but I do think this this is a case where we always felt, I've always felt personally, Buckingham Town Council should be involved at the year's greatest in section one O six, because who knows better what's the Buckingham than the Town Council?
Yes.
Buckinghamshire Councils don't always do these things and they get carried away with the everything else to do. So we think hope that for a chair, we can bring back something about that to talk about it in much more even than the me knowing information and we not.
See, we can bring some sort of a proper discussion.
Discuss it and if you've got thoughts on it, then it'll be all our thoughts on it, rather than my prejudices, which are many.
Yeah, can I just ask, when they talk about a school Milton Keynes, does that mean that we can Milton Keynes funding it?
No, what what they said.
They're not.
What they said chair in the response, which is on the website, I've cut it out to keep it for prosperity. Because I thought it was far too good information, not let go. Um the they are planning to provide secondary school education in the new developments on the outskirts of Milton Keynes. They recognise that there's a need for sixth development here. They also recognise that um pre-mental school isn't, no longer doing sixth form. Now, between all this, we have to be aware that we will be having growth. Winslow will be having growth.
Yeah.
And so this new development, my concern is that whichever development goes further, development takes place the earliest.
Yeah.
We could get irritated if we haven't got a assigned project.
Yeah.
The the money goes and then in the localism act, it states clearly, um that's a long time ago, when the localism act passed, and it states clearly that those areas except development should benefit from those developments. And I feel that this is a step away from it, but I think it's better that you all have that information.
Okay.
And discuss it more freely than than me saying what I know, because that's a fair conversation.
That's very helpful, yeah. Okay, very interesting and definitely one for us to have it. Because we don't actually have a bigger picture view on what education we we have, but we do need to have it on the agenda and presented in a proper way. Thank you, Robin. Uh John, you are.
Yeah, with regards to this, obviously, it's it's helpful to see the Royal Council's response to the planning inspector's decision. And obviously they've looked into it with some depth and they appreciate that, you know, due process has been followed according to the law. Um but as we all know, the law can sometimes be wrong. Um and I think this is a political matter that needs to be raised with our MP. Um and through our MP with the Secretary of State, because I think it undermines the whole principle of major development plans in a rather significant way.
So the Site Q decision.
Precedent that could well be used in many other places, not just in Buckinghamshire, but in many other towns and bridges. So I'd like to suggest this motion, while we get out twice so you can hear the voice and absorb it. Uh this planning committee resolves to write to our MP asking him to discuss the matter of the government planning inspector's decision to allow the housing development to wipe back in direct conflict with the democratically agreed Buckingham neighbourhood development plan with the secondary state, the aim of the correspondence should be to seek clarification of the government's policy on neighbourhood development plans. Is the government content or not that the planning inspector's decision has effectively set a precedent and undermined every single MDP in the UK, made ones and ones currently unified one?
Yeah, now I'm getting advice that we, this is, as it's not being put on the agenda, we can.
I asked you to be put on the agenda.
Did you?
Very much I asked you to be put on the agenda and the town clerk said that I could do it this way instead. That was the advice that I received.
Okay, okay, I'm getting it up here.
So it's a motion, it's a it's a motion that can come from the floor, simply write a letter, that's all it is. And that's a motion that we can raise from the floor.
Yeah.
Um under our standing orders.
Okay, thank you, John. Um do you need to have a second?
A second.
Second, at least a second, you give. And Lisa, do you want to speak at this point?
No, it's fine, I agree with her saying no.
It's just, it's.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, no, no problem with the principle of the motion. What I'm gathering, and I'm only going by what the training says and what the planning officers say, is that the neighbourhood plans are, their their training is suggesting that the neighbourhood plans are the best and the most forceful way of doing it. What they aren't saying is about the weight that a neighbourhood plan has at the end of its planning life. So let's not get confused between the new neighbourhood plan, which we have to be very careful how we discuss this at this point in time, we're going out to consultation on a new neighbourhood plan. And we have to make sure that that neighbourhood plan is um goes through and accepted. This would be running um could give the wrong impression at this time of what we want to do with the neighbourhood plan and then people may vote against it because they feel it won't do any good. But the actual legal advice is that it will do some good. The actual legal advice out there is what we can do. What we could do is bounce ourselves into a position of which we wish we hadn't got. So what I would suggest in amendment here that we wait until we get all the information relevant around the legal text of the powers of the neighbourhood plan. The the powers of that plan will give us against the loss of power through planning weight. Planning weight is what you get at the beginning of a plan and at the end of it loses it because of the emerging Vale Plan, which outpaced our plan. So I think the motion is emotionally correct at the wrong time. So I would suggest that we um don't do that because I would not want to be in a position where the town council goes out to consultation on a plan, telling the people, don't bother to look at it because we've put a motion for a plan in, which could get accepted at council, because it's a full council decision. And which case it undermines the work of the entire neighbourhood plan and then we don't have a neighbourhood plan which passes its its submissions and we have no legal weight of it. And for the emotions of this one application, we lose the battle in the long term. Because many of the things which have been done in neighbourhood plans are well worth having. So I think we haven't got the information to make that decision. And I would definitely not support a motion like that, that's why I'm going to amend it, that we wait until we've got the correct and valued information to make that decision.
Okay.
The motion's the right one, the timing's the wrong one.
Yeah, okay. So it's a question of where we're at in the neighbourhood planning development process, whether this will send a message that we're actually undermining the whole process and we lose the new one. Right, Lisa?
Thank you. Um so long as we're clear that the Site Q and our argument about not wanting this application there is because we have a major neighbourhood development plan that was democratically voted on.
Which is against, and it's against the old plan.
Yeah, this site here is against that. So this is against our current made plan and the new one that's in the pipeline isn't there yet, but we're arguing that this is against our made plan which we need to fight for.
Yeah. Even though it's losing its planning weight as we speak, so to speak. Okay, I don't, Rob and I know it's my expertise on the topic. How about people from around the table? Do you see Lucy looking, so she'll have to say something helpful? I'm going to get a broad set of views, I've got a lot of passion around this and we all want to get this right because it's.
Well, again, I agree with John, I think we should get as many uh forces behind us as we can with this. I see the Rob uh logic in what Robin's saying and all I've, it's more of a question than a statement, timing wise. Waiting for the correct information. Is that going to impact when we can kind of raise concerns about Site Q or, and again, purely a question so that I understand the process, Robin, rather than.
Yeah, this.
It was an idea of time.
My 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 view, this won't affect the principle of the motion. What it will make, George, is that when we bring the motion back to agree it um in a, the the, there's a report which states all that stuff we need to know. And if I'm wrong, I will apologise, but I know I'm not. Um so I'm not going to apologise and um and because I actually sit and I talk to officers face to face on a daily basis. And I have a reasonable understanding of the
Timing.
Timing of these things.
Clear idea.
I think it will be be two to three months. The rights of the MP.
Three months.
I think because we've got to get all that paperwork in head, that that we're not going to be able to undo the inspector's decision unless we put money towards it. And that's a completely different perspective. Um and and we'd have to come up with some horrendous, expensive grounds to do that. What we should be concentrating on is making sure that we use this to defend the veil, the emerging town plan. So it could be that when the emerging town plans get out to consultation, we get that through and then because we've got a made a plan, that is the time, I think, to actually make these questions to defend our plan, which is out to consultation or been agreed, because that's a really strong political point to make. And that, I think, is the right time to make it with the Member of Parliament, it's the right time to force the Member of Parliament to ask the questions. And I I I want to do this in the best strength to do it and I'm not against it, John, I think the timing now is far too early and we'll end up ruining the work of many people who've put the neighbourhood plan together and that would be a waste.
Yeah.
I've explained it enough, I can.
Yeah, that's quite right.
Just make a comment on the standing orders. Uh so um motions obviously must be uh given in advance notice, according to the standing orders Friday before the meeting to come onto the agenda. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case, we didn't make it. The agenda item is to note, so that's what members should be doing. There is a list of motions in standing orders that's that where it says these motions can be brought um that do not require written notice. Uh this substantive motion wouldn't fit any of those.
Yeah.
So my advice to you as clerk of this meeting is that we can't vote on this. That would be my advice, what members of the House choose to do so anyway.
Okay.
And I asked some work is done with the proposal of the motion to make sure that he has the right to put it and some discussion around those elements that I said, so that we do it well, strong and with some purpose. And uh that's supporting, it's not undermining, it's not meant to be. If you're going to win, let's win, let's not lose everything.
Uh I'm sorry, I I would just mention for members to note that um neighbourhood plan is for council.
Yeah, okay, so for all of those reasons, that doesn't go forward, John?
Well, I'd like to propose instead then that we simply ask for the town clerk to give us a report on the implications of the Site Q decision on our neighbourhood development plan. We don't actually have that yet.
No.
As to exactly what the implications are for our neighbourhood development plan. And that is a motion that we raised from the floor.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Uh the, that would be acceptable. Uh the um we won't know that until we get a response from the examiner.
Yeah, okay, but is that, is John's motion seconded? Lisa, yeah, okay. And all in favour of that motion, which is to have a report on Site Q from the from the clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favour, yeah, all in favour of extension, thank you, John.
Are you going to come up and say?
Yeah, of course you can.
This is final, I need to mark, this is significant to us.
Yeah.
And as I, as I was challenged once before when decisions were made by the constitutional, the Royal Council, and I said then that's going to remove all the power from the councils, but all in the hands of the County Office. And the planning officer so people around the city have said, oh, no, no, but they'll never happen.
And. Yes, we told you though, I think it's the same phrase.
Definitely.
Right, let's, so we move on. Thank you. Um item, so nine two two. Um hopefully, again, I have quite a lot of time, twelve Brackley Road, still got lawful use. Um who wants to enlighten me on this one?
It's a very long property, it's got all the, from the Brackley Road right down to the river. Um the house is about in the middle of this. Um the back land on the riverbank is telegraph ground. Um there was garden near the house, but um the rest of it is essentially a field. Um they wanted to include this as part of their garden as as a, within the curtsbridge. And it's been doing two and three whole years. Um they they did finally get Environment Agency permission to build a little landing stage, so they can put it back in the boat on the river. Um they provided photographs of picnics and hanging washing out, um but not apparently the vital children's play equipment, which would make it a garden. Um and that is what the inspector has dismissed the change of use to residential garden, but has allowed the construction of the landing stage, which is there for fully fifteen years.
That's very clever. So so we're just noting this rather.
Yes, and I do feel sorry for them because they really, I mean, not everybody has in our kind of photographs of their back garden, don't they?
Okay, right. Uh but it need to take us too long here at this meeting. No, no, thank you. Um item ten, action reports, uh final application responses, um anything that anyone wants to comment on under ten one? Or ten two? Oh, sorry, Lucy, sorry.
Um on the action report, um number one, psychway railway walk. Um is that what we're on at the moment?
Yeah.
Uh obviously, I've walked on railway walk.
Yeah.
Multiple times today.
Yeah.
Um and where the gate goes through into St. Rumbel's Field and where the developers have built that path not once but twice in front of a uh a freshwater spring. Um all of the aggregate on top of the path has now flowed into the drain on Buckinghamshire Council land, blocking it completely and the railway walk in a time of barely significant drought has now flooded. And there is an inch of water.
Um.
Okay.
I've I've tried raising up the Buckinghamshire rights away before and I nearly threw my laptop out the window because it was such a frustrating process that doesn't work. Um and I was going to ask Catherine, I know you're incredibly busy and overloaded, if I were to send the photos to you and some locations. Is is there any benefit in sending it?
The council staff today sent me the section thirty-eight um document that they're about to consider adoption on and they definitely need to know about that. So I'm going to try and, Robin, and you can take it.
Yeah, I'll put the photos.
Very happy to do that. Um on the railway walk, I have um on May second, I emailed them about an update for the railway world, thinking that perhaps we all have a discussion about it. The response is basically until we get a cabinet member in place, which will be on Wednesday. Um and they're not prepared to enter into any discussions, so we're waiting.
Imminent.
Imminent. So so my view, and I Imminent. So, so my view, and I wrote back to them in some length. Um, actually quite a lot. Um, and, uh, as I said, the, um, that I was really concerned about the landowners. Being fully involved, and the, not to be, forget that Buckingham Town Council is a major landowner. And the university is another landowner. And, um, and not, I reminded those points. So what I think we need to do is, and I'm not sure where this falls, I asked Steve, is this. Going to remain a planning issue, will it be an environment committee issue? Because the project in itself probably involves the railway wall.
Okay, let's ask the question.
I've not had that advice yet, so.
So where everything's supposed to be discussed, let's have a discussion.
Okay.
About it.
I think we're happy to do that, yeah. It's such an important part of Buckingham. Lucy walks up and down every day.
And I, I, I will take on the issues.
Thank you very much.
Now I'm in conversation.
Okay, lovely. Um, can I go to, can I sneak on to item three? Some tree work applications. This is a work of art or history or something?
Well, actually, I had, I had it all in. Um, did you ask for this, Council Harvey? I think you did, yes. Last meeting, you said you wanted the tree works as well as the felling things on our rolling list.
Does this meet what you were hoping for, John?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. I loved your talk. Thank you very much.
Excellent. I didn't know we'd moved on the next item already.
Well, I was sneaking on to ten three if I could, I don't know.
I think Lucy, it's an important point about reporting problems for the rights of way.
Yes.
It is, I can understand why you almost threw your laptop out the window, because I've tried reporting rights of way.
And it's.
And it's, it does not work. And the Shire Council needs to know that.
And how can we make sure that that happens?
Well, it's right there.
The office, street.
Well, I, I, I have to have a decent instance to offer them of it not working, so is it, is it that?
Lucy's had one, Lucy's got one.
Yeah, but we have been telling them for years that that well was fed by.
Lucy, could you just brief Catherine? Perhaps, not now, but at the outside meeting, so we can take that for, because it's, it's a train.
I'll pop into the office and tell you.
Okay, can I move on? Um, item eleven, Buckinghamshire Council Committee Meetings, um. Uh, Catherine, I don't know whether you want to rehearse your command of the dates.
They, they only just became available today. Um, well, the North Bucks Area Planning Committee is now the central at North Bucks Planning Committee. Um, and it's not meeting until the twenty fifth of June and then the twenty third of July, so we've got plenty of time to sit down and not get. Strategic sites is thirty first of July, the first available. Um, growth and infrastructure, which is sort of something I monitor for your benefit in case there's anything interesting on it, is twenty seventh of July.
Thank you.
And transport environment and climate change is twenty third of September.
Thank you, Catherine. Yeah, lovely. Thank you very much, Lee. Um, moving on, oh, sorry, no, not moving on. Didn't see who came up first. Can I go to Martin first?
Just to say on eleven point one, I have emailed, uh, today the last secretary of the, um. Whatever it is, B B C.
Yes.
And asked her to take off, uh, Anthony Ralph and Sue Heatherington as well. And put me on instead. So, uh, you know, they may have an updated members list as well.
Never know, never know. Particularly F or R will be coming on, sure. Sorry, Steve.
So, what's it? Thank Martin for being on, and that, that will have to come directly to the office, and I know Paul is working through that list from last month.
Yes, yes, okay. Robin, darling.
Just, so, obviously Buckingham, the Planning Committee, tomorrow you'll see who locally is on which committees. On Wednesday, I mean, but I pretty much know who will be on one side but not from the other. Um, so that'll give you an idea of the makeup of the committees. They're gonna be very different this time round. This is some areas of Buckinghamshire, um, there's a majority to one side, in some areas there's a majority to the other. Some of the chairs and committees will be different this time round, presumably, and they were historically. What I would say is that the Great and Infrastructure Committee, there was, there is a, a need for the local view. To make its way through to that committee. And I think Mark Catherine did that adequately. Um, and the Environment and Transport and Climate Change Committee, looking at Heather, is something where I think we have not been. Quite as pungent in our questioning and challenging, because it does. Um, the, the, the constitution does allow you to write a question, and if you go and speak to it, it becomes more relevant in the meeting. I know the Finance and Security Committee, which you attended to sometime ago, perhaps not quite as pleasant. But I can assure you that most of the other committee meetings aren't, aren't reasonably well chaired, and I think it would give a, it would give an opportunity to do that. So obviously one may ask, maybe on any one of those things, but. Um, but I do think that it's important that the town council speaks its truth to power.
Get our voice out. Thank you, Robin, very much indeed. Absolutely, spot on. Visit these places and ask questions, as Robin does. Anyway, um. Can I move on? We've noted that. Yep, okay. Item twelve, street naming, um. Receive information, the street naming policy. The names and addresses for the Laisse d'Or Medical Centre and the Complex Care Home. Imagine this is terribly hot topic, but John will doubtless have an interesting comment.
Um, I'm just curious to know why the building has been named Emerson House.
Ah, yes, we do know that.
We've got no information about that. Didn't we get an option of giving us suggestions as to the names? We've done so.
I will email you this, which is, it was the reasons I was given. Um, it's, um. A small boy was, who died three years ago and was, had a lot of special needs. And, um, it's, it was up to them to name it, it's the developer's choice. And they just were approached by his parents and are properly emailed.
Okay, thank you. There is a, there is a reason. Thank you very much, Catherine.
Can you send that round to all members?
Um, okay, so that's item twelve, um, and we're now, thank you, Catherine. And item thirteen, enforcement. Does anybody need to report? Any breaches that they spotted, the lights? John?
Definitely. I think they were instructed to turn off their lights, wouldn't they? Put that light, put it down. Because if they were, they would switch them off.
Yeah.
I think.
The definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I thought we were complaining about the lavender paint one.
I will check. Catherine will check.
Yeah, okay. I, I can't recall.
It went, it went, it went to sort of lavender purple and called itself the Thai lounge and then went back to the.
No, no, the orange, didn't it? Yeah.
It's still called the definitely, no.
Okay.
It's still got lots of very garish lights, which in the conservation area, I think we have objections. So you want to remember this?
Any other breaches? Any other things like to learn, if not, um, we are going to move on to item fourteen. Rolling this updates only, pre-felling applications and H M O licences, again. It's nice, it's good to have the information. Um, you may not necessarily need to debate it, but it's good to know we've got it. And if it, Catherine, for your work.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Great.
Could we create a circular walk around the H M O's?
That's worth waiting for, Catherine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very long walk, though, wouldn't it?
Moving on to item fifteen, which brings us back to section one oh six. Section one oh six is quarterly update. Again, it's to receive the updated information on money that we haven't received and, Robin.
This will have to be amended sometime this year, because. If they say as they did in the previous council that infrastructure levy is coming in.
Yeah.
It might be useful to, um, get some idea around the time of that. Because infrastructure levy on future developments, not the ones which come in, twenty five percent of that would automatically come to this council. Um, and we'd have to find a good reason why it wouldn't come to this council. So I think we need to do that, and also, um. Would it not be a good time, um, a future time to, um. Have a discussion, and we haven't had one for many years. When years ago, officers used to occasionally trip to places like town councils, come and talk down the thinking of section one oh six and how they're gonna use it. And what their intentions are. I would, I would think that.
Not when I spotted you, it's okay.
Have an invite to get someone to come here and say, um, what is the view of Buckinghamshire Council on the use of section one oh six, the time is at them. And so, and so that, so that we ask better questions thereafter.
Do we feel comfortable with that?
Clark is already, um, in conversation about that.
Yeah, but that's not us.
Hmm.
No, yeah, in conversation about inviting somebody.
To the planning.
To, well, certainly to Buckingham, others know, bring standard discussion, whether it's to planning or to full council. Because, of course, um, different things are for different, um, committees to discuss.
Yeah. Yes, any decision about future funding would be a full council decision.
The briefing.
Very big. But, but I think that the idea that a committee wouldn't discuss it and just get a report of full council. When there could be a really good discussion here and a recommendation based upon the report. Would give a chance to do it full council, we're just gonna be rushing through it at speed and not doing the graniere discussion, which needs to take place.
I think, I think there are sort of two things in my mind that we need to be, well, three things. One, education, one is this, uh, sills, whatever's gonna go down, sewage. I don't know whether.
Community infrastructure levy.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, thank you, yes. So I just think we, at some point, the agenda, we would like to discuss it.
I'm, I'm always keen personally to hear, to discuss it in length.
Yeah, well.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm very pleased the town clerk is scheduling some reports. But I like to see the men, myself as a mentor, I like to discuss it and come up with a view, which might influence a future report. Um, because that's what we've been elected to do.
Invite someone, yeah. I think I've seconded it, seconded Robin's proposal.
You did.
I did, yeah.
Okay, so is there a proposal then that we'd like to vote on from Robin, seconded by? To invite somebody to brief us on section one oh six. Yeah, and so the two ones. So, um, all in favour of that? Anybody against? Or you're abstaining?
No. I can vote on this because I'm not, I'm not a planning issue. I've proposed it, so I can vote on it. It's not planning.
I get that one. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, item sixteen then, matters. Oh, sorry, John.
Yeah, so the figure that's shouting at me is three hundred and eighty thousand on Lace Hill. We spent on bus and public transport subsidy. And it says in the comments. Funding to be drawn down by the B C C, which shows how old it is, patterns of transporting depending on service requirements. Now, I'd like to find out just on what basis that money is going to be spent. Because there's no use by date or lose by date, whatever, against that figure. I'm very concerned that there are some, um, I think, very pressing transport matters. That could well be investigated for social reasons. Um, that would be useful to our community. Because we know my longstanding support.
We do, John.
Idea for a bus coast service on North End.
Yeah.
Through us, you know, through Silverstone, us on to Aylesbury and beyond to, to High Wycombe. Um, because I think that really is the bus service that we need, for several reasons. One, the dramatic developments are happening. In Silverstone and the, and the, well, the education. And the problems that are arising there. Um, the Wind, Windlow Station, that's going to be happening very soon.
Yeah.
Um, and a whole heap of other matters that were connecting together. Um, and I think we really are compressing that some of this money, and it wouldn't take an awful lot to do a feasibility study. A proper feasibility study on that. We might need to kind of work with the Labouring Councils in Northamptonshire to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm going to imagine maybe keen to, to take it forward. So can we investigate this and come back with a bit more detail about how and what this funding might be drawn?
Three hundred and eighty K.
And could we propose the idea? So can we just have a dialogue about that with the, the paper officer, officers?
Let's see what other people say, John. Thank you, Ashley. Uh, Fran?
Um, there's a couple of things. Um, I see it's B C C pass, passenger transport team. Um, rather than transport. Um, and also, um, looking at the other figures on here. It does seem to be the sum agreed and the amount remaining, um, seem to correlate with the amount spent. But you've got some agreed ninety five and the amount remaining three hundred and eighty on that line. How does that work?
And I'm not sure somebody's asked that question before, because I thought, how odd, and there was an explanation for it, but let's find out what it actually is. Whether it's a phase thing or something.
So I'm promoting that.
I know, I know, I know, that is a good transport. Um, Robin, you've started.
Dom raised this on several occasions.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's been signaling this for a very, very long time, and I think he brought it to council. And I think that we are, we agreed at council that we would write and ask this question. Now, that's probably halfway through the previous council, so he's never come back to us with a response or anything. So I'm frustrated that he's having to raise it again. I do believe he'd go back for a minute, he raised it. I think he brought a motion to council, um, to be done. So I think that that question about that road and that rail, that, um, bus link is permanent. What I do think we need to do is find out what Silverstone's view is. In the sense that Silverstone obviously wants well-educated, bright people to go and work at Silverstone for Buckingham. And people travelling on a bus would be much better than, um, me going around in my car. So, um, I think this is something perhaps we should, um, find out what the response we received from the motion. What John put to council, I believe. Um, we should have had a response about that by now and. And then go back and do the Silverstone question. It could be Silverstone adds the weight to John's point, which he's been saying about for a very, very long time. Um, that might actually bring it.
I've got that. So, but what we're done is starting from, from this agenda, where the, the only place we can start. Is the section one oh six quarterly update and the fact that there's three hundred and eighty thousand pounds, which seems to be allocated for transport. And there is a subsidiary report that we actually have been down this line and thought before, and that the office was going to investigate it. Can I ask you?
But may I suggest that this, on the assumption that we can't get, um, a colleague from Buckinghamshire Council to pay a visit. This strikes me as an ideal opportunity to ask that question in that meeting with the officers sat there. Um, as a starting point, that would be my suggestion, because it is notoriously. Uh, difficult to get a response to, whereas if you've got the other side of the front, it might be a good starting point.
Okay, I see John done it.
I think that's a big point, as Steve raised there, but I would say if we were doing that, then all you need to give a warning to the officer. These are the points we want to discuss, specifically this one. I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, we just need to problem this out, we just need to get some of these money statements.
Yes.
But you know what happened? We saw what happened to the Strut of the Road. Because it wasn't specifically, you know, and it's like, I just fear that there are interests from the developers. Who'd rather sometimes this money isn't spent.
Yes.
So nice to shake.
One last comment from Robin.
I think this is a case where I think, um, because it, 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 it's trade, industry and employment. This is a case where I think it, the importance of this bus is crucial to the future, um. Environmental agendas. I think this is a case where it is, um, worth raising at this stage a letter with a Member of Parliament. And say, are you aware of this? Um, would you support this? And can we ask for your help in, 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 in the conversation that needs to take place? Because why would you not want people from Buckingham and Windlow to whatever, to be able to use a bus to go somewhere? Why would you want them to get in their car? Um, so I think that's a good point.
Right, um, I think Heather.
Just there is already a bus between Buckingham and Silverstone, but some people use the kids into working Silverstone, so. That's there already, but presumably it would. that's there already, but presumably it would be a more frequent service.
Yeah.
We might find that those opportunities are then equally open to people in Northampton, because they can take the bus in the opposite direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Be careful what you wish for.
No, no, we can, we can smart those people from Northampton, hopefully. Um, Fran?
So I was, I was wanting to, um, ask about the, um, Morton Road Phase Three and the hundred and sixty six thousand, two hundred and seven pounds transport contribution, um, which it looks like it's been committed but not spent, according to this. T F D, progressing scheme comprising a footway improvements along Morton Road, um, um, R T P I, bus shelter, opposite Bow and Market and at Market Hill and cycle parking facilities in the town centre. Um, local B C C, councillors consulted as part of the scheme development, so that's again, that's going back a long, long time.
Yeah.
Um, I was approached a little while ago by somebody who lives by where that bus, there is a bus shelter on Morton Road. Um, to ask for its removal because the service has stopped.
No, it hasn't, there is one bus a day.
That's pretty early.
And it's at half past nine now, so I mean, it's.
So maybe I've got to work this on.
Yeah. It's all anything, um, I think it will disappear.
Well, that was by design then, wasn't it? That's probably the times that nobody can use it.
Yeah, the little red, mini bus service.
Right.
Now, it is not more frequent yet, but I think if the big bus doesn't do it anymore, then those little buses are going to become more and more popular.
Yeah.
Because they do.
Well, they're, they're happy buses, aren't they? Um, I've, I've, my, the, the person that contacted me was basically complaining about antisocial behaviour that was going on in that bus, bus shelter.
Of course.
Um, they were, they were cleaning up all sorts of.
Yes.
They were cleaning up all sorts of things in there, which we won't get into details of, and people having parties in it and, and things, but really, yeah. Um, I'm just concerned that that's, that's hundred and sixty six thousand, there aren't any cycle parking facilities in the town centre, as far as I know, um, it's come from that.
Into section one oh six after section one oh six, including Walnut Drive. A dedicated cycleway down the Morton Road and I haven't yet to see a feasibility study.
Well, it, it's probably not very feasible.
It's not very good, whether there are going to be signs and all this sort of thing. Um, it's the.
So general frustration on those.
The footpath, was because when they decided on bus shelter, they didn't actually put a footpath in the verge. Either to the Bow and Stop or to the one at the rugby club lane.
Yeah.
And they now have done that, I mean, you have mothers with prams walking through the road, which is not safe.
Yeah.
So that has been done and, and it's, it's so apparent, that bus shelter.
Ooh.
I just want, but it goes on there.
Yeah, but what I was going to ask is, is there any way of, of, of chasing this up?
Yeah.
With the, the, the bits of it which obviously haven't been done yet and, um, requesting why, again, we've lost the service, that the, the, the money was spent on providing.
Provide, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The shelter for people to use.
Yeah, can I, can I ask also from the chair? Um, you know, we see all these plans of where the houses are going to be in the park and we, and we agonise over there, but we never see the plans for spending a section, section one oh six money, do we? Do we see it beforehand, afterwards? We just see a bit of it several.
But the first thing we normally hear about is when the document goes on to the board.
We have, also for the years, if we have a seat at the table and it's never, ever happened.
Yeah, because it's their money or something, there's two, two lots of there, the council down there and the developers down there, so. Um, so somebody needs to work out where our, where our leverage is in this one source, you have a family, yeah. Um, Andy, and then Robin?
Yeah, so the, if you can guess, there's a bus that goes through Buckingham, the seven three seven runs from First and to the airport through through Buckingham twice a day, if you can just get it to stop, uh, so people could use it.
You know, you're running, John.
Uh, I would say, use, use the link to be through and Gatwick.
Yes.
Uh, if there's some money has to be, you know.
Yes.
I've actually been placed.
Are you? Okay.
Okay, look at all of this, so, okay.
And next, I, I do delive to the bus. On my visits to Lace Hill, that there is a bus running through Lace Hill now, because it said temporary stop in the entrance and I was most impressed, two buses standing in my, I always stood there talking, um. But, uh, two buses.
One in my direction, the other one that's right off there.
So, so I think that this use of it, and I think that there will be a new, a cabinet member, both transport and the cabinet member for planning development and, and highways, it's a case, I think, where there's no joint up thinking for this, in the sense that, you know, the, the, everybody's making their individual decisions in different places, all with, um, um, their own individual hats on. And this is about, you know, do they ever have a meeting to discuss the long term prize of it, do they ever meet and do that? I suspect they do in cabinet, but cabinet isn't a place that they really do that, so maybe it's a case, let's find out who's going to be in these jobs and then, um, it's a case of maybe we then try and get a discussion at this, we've got, it's like four years, so let's try and start a decent discussion now and see where we can get in four years.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, right, I think we've probably got around that one, I mean, there is a real sort of frustration and need to manage, uh, the, the money that comes with these developments to make or that, you know, whatever, we need to find a lever, we can actually make them work for us and actually make them pay out for us. Um, and there's also this real frustration over transport per se, I remember this through C A B, Rural Issues Group. Um, and there are all sorts of ideas about how you could, you know, make bus services work better, so that, you know, as Andy was saying, it's going through to stop sometimes, you know, in running hours.
Best schools, you know?
Yeah, so that would, that would be wonderful, so I think we need to follow this up, I'm not absolutely sure sitting here is what we're going to do, but it sounds as though the office is going to think about it. And we like to see somebody and obviously where we can take it forward. And I think also there's a line from, from Robin that we should get ourselves down and talk to the cabinet members um, and see what, uh, see what they're thinking of them and just a reminder that Buckingham is on the map. And we don't wear, we don't still, you know, drive around stage pictures anymore.
Just a question of process. Just a question of process, did we actually vote on the proposal, I think we did, to actually, that we want them here, we did that, sorry. I'm not sure there's a minimum for that, that we actually, that's what we, thank you, that's what we did.
John, sorry.
So we've agreed that we invite the people who were concerned with this at the town council, who presumably manage this process.
Yeah.
To come to a meeting and we'll, we'll link. We also have agreed, I think, that we would give them some heads up as the issues that we want to raise, so they can be prepared to answer other questions.
Yeah. Um. Or engage in a dialogue rather.
Or engage in a dialogue.
Not as an inquisition, but it goes to.
It's not a council.
Anyway, we, we, I think we've gone round and round again, it's the houses. But I'm going to close this up now, um, and move on to the even more exciting item sixteen, matters of what may must report any damage to public redundancies in the town. Access issues or any other urgent matter, John, you're.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, Catherine knows about this, because Catherine's always already put in a, a request for it to be fixed, but it's still not fixed. In the path that I take between, um, Moorhead Way and the upper part of the, uh, of, of, of the heartlands there, there's a fence, only this fence is about, about three feet off the ground, solid wood that has rotted at, at the feet. Um, there are currently bits that people have just picked up and thrown in the, in the, in the neighbourhood, nearby woodland. So there are bits that are sticking out, it's not safe, all you would take would be for, um, a frail person or a small child to put on top of them and cause real damage, which is easy to be talked about by the town council, but they haven't had.
Is it that?
Their fans, and they need to do a P B Q, I don't know if you have a response at all to.
Well, I've had acknowledgement of the report, but that's.
I think we need to.
Then, then you, you don't, you don't get anywhere if you try and up the pressure, it's, you know, they've got to raise a work order, then they've got to do this and then they've got to do that.
Anyway, it's probably, it's recorded.
And they, but I did, I did actually go out and I've got photographs of all the bits of things that needed work.
Yeah.
Um, and they do react quicker if they can actually see the problem.
It's, it's the narrative, isn't it, the storyline emotion?
Thank you for getting the free choice.
Yeah. Thank you, Catherine, um, anything else? Heather?
Yeah, I have one we spotted a day or two ago, which I don't think my husband's yet reported, but, um, this the kind of wooded area behind Hilltop Avenue on the way up to Major Norton Cricket Pitch.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a sort of five bar date leading into Hills, Hilltop Avenue, um, which has been built and rebuilt and rebuilt and the latest version of it, it is entirely impossible to open it. It's basically being positioned so that you can't move the lever to, that, that will allow it to open. And so my husband's in a disability, my ability to scoot it.
Yeah.
He can't go through there anymore because it's no access.
Yeah.
All my grounds or, or anything else into there at the moment.
Yes. So is that a, got who moved that to? So fix my screen for it.
I'd suggest this is a good opportunity to check out and write some way reporting.
Certainly is part of Buckingham spaces, um, so I'll, I'll go through to my usual contact.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Great, yeah.
Thank goodness for Catherine. Um, I'm going to move on then, item seventeen, chairs announcements. You can announce your. I have no announcements today, um, uh, so, but thank you for your support tonight. Um, and, uh, item eighteen, woo, date of next meeting, Monday the sixteenth of June, coming interim for council, but I am then going well, I was totally slightly relieved that. Um, so with that, really, you know, I'll close the meeting.